Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, January 27th, 2006, and it is 10:00 a.m. We are in the John Farrow Council Chambers in an open meeting the public can attend here in room 340 of City Hall, which is at 200 North Spring Street in downtown Los Angeles, accessible by private car but of course by public transit as well. We are being broadcast live on Channel 35 and this is tape that's replayed this evening. We also invite folks to watch us through our webcast at the www.lacity.org homepage where we can watch live webcasts of the council proceedings. We're also broadcast on council phone, a number you can call directly to hear council meetings and our city meetings, which is 213-621-CITY. So with that, I'd like to begin the meeting with presentations as is customary on Friday. Want to welcome our special guests. I know we have the Mayor of San Salvador here and some other folks. Bienvenidos al alcalde del San Salvador. First presentation, we'll recognize Councilmember Greg Smith and just a friendly reminder to all colleagues, about six-minute presentation time. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. It's a great opportunity today to celebrate Los Angeles' success once again in one of our many ongoing efforts and as chairman, outgoing chairman of the Public Works Committee, gives me a great deal of joy and pride to announce that the City of Los Angeles has saved residents of the city approximately $450,000 a year in flood insurance premium rates. This discount of premium rates will be provided to residents living within 100-year flood zone areas and will receive a 15% discount, which is up from 10% last year. The National Flood Insurance Program's Community Rating System is a voluntary incentive program that recognizes and encourages community floodplain management activities that exceed minimum FFIP requirements. As a result, flood insurance premium rates are discounted to reflect the reduced flood risk resulting from community actions. These community actions include preparation of floodplain management plan and preservation of open space in special floodzone hazard areas such as the Los Angeles National Golf Course and Big Hanga Wash. The City of Los Angeles has received a Class VII rating and there are only 9% of the participating communities in the nation that have a better rating than the City of Los Angeles. For residents watching on Channel 35, if you'd like more information about this program, you can go to the city's website at http: navigateLA, all one word, navigateLA.lacity.org/FlugGIS. I'd like to thank particularly our Department of Public Works and especially our city engineer who's just doing an incredible job on so many efforts the last year since his appointment for the role they played in this achievement. We are joined today by the FEMA 9 representative for this region and I'd like our city engineer, Mr. Moore, to introduce the FEMA representative, but I also want to thank, and I spoke briefly to her, FEMA's partnership with the City of LA on so many fronts, particularly this flood program and of course the earthquake mitigation programs which we've engaged in over the years, which has benefited the City of LA. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, the city engineer, Mr. Moore.
Councilmembers, Councilman Smith, it's great to be here today to celebrate for the residents of Los Angeles. It's always great to save money for our residents. And today, with great pleasure and honor, I'd like to introduce Sally Jokowski, who is the Division Director of Mitigation for FEMA Region 9, a position she's held since 1999. As I'd like to say, she's the big boss who gives us lots of money to help us. And so with that, Sally.
Gary, thank you for the introduction, Councilman. It is with pleasure that I present to the City of Los Angeles City Council this plaque that represents significant accomplishments in flood reduction for the City of Los Angeles. For a city of just under 4 million people, it really is an amazing accomplishment that you have worked so well through your Department of Public Works and Bureau of Engineering to accomplish this Class VII rating. This puts the City of Los Angeles in that upper-third of the nation of participating Community Rating System communities and it shows your commitment and excellence in the performance of floodplain management. As has been mentioned, the residents will receive a 15% discount on the flood insurance program. That should equate to about $75 per 100,000 of flood insurance coverage, which is excellent. We have something like 7,700 policies in force for the National Flood Insurance Program covering just under $2 billion and has been said by others, having flood insurance coverage is one of the first steps toward preparedness. I'd like to say that FEMA is no stranger to participating with the city. So often though, we are here because we are in a disaster response mode or long-term recovery mode. So it is truly a pleasure that I can represent our regional office in a more traditional mode here and especially to recognize the fine efforts of the city. The plaque that I am presenting to the City of Los Angeles is for successful participation in the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System. The community, City of Los Angeles, has undertaken a series of meaningful activities to protect its citizens from losses caused by flooding and has significantly exceeded the requirements for NFIP participation and effective floodplain management. Signed by David Marstead, our Mitigation Division Director in Washington. Congratulations to the city and thank you for this opportunity to share this presentation with you.
Once again, we thank our city engineer and our Department of Public Works for just being great city employees and doing that extraordinary work. And again, it's the citizens of Los Angeles that are saving this close to half a million dollars in their insurance because of the great work of our city employees that have done on their behalf. And again, we thank FEMA for the great partnership we have shared with FEMA over many, many years and too many disasters, but thank you for your participation. It's always great to work with you. Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith, and congratulations again. We love seeing FEMA when it's not disaster time. Next, I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes for a special guest. Ladies and gentlemen, if you can please draw your attention, we have the mayor of one of our sister cities with us here today from San Salvador. So with that, I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Members of the council, we all know that Los Angeles is the Alice Island of the West. Many of our countries, many of our communities represent many of the countries of the world. The fact is that the larger Los Angeles grows, the smaller the world becomes. And today, we are talking about one of our neighbors to the south. And not only talking about Mexico, we're talking about all of our neighbors in the Western Hemisphere. And these relations, we need to continue to nurture because of our role in the international economy. The funds that come from our neighborhoods go back to the homeland and vice versa. Our trade enhances, our ability to understand and become a world-class city also enhances. But today, it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you El Esenciado Carlos Rivas Zamora, the mayor of our sister city, San Salvador, which is the capital of El Salvador. With an approval rating that many of us would be envious, over 60%, the Honorable Mayor Zamora continues to be an advocate of his people not only in his home country of El Salvador, but also here in a great city of Los Angeles. Los Angeles has one of the largest populations of El Salvadorians outside of El Salvador. So with great pleasure, I welcome El Esenciado Carlos Rivas Zamora, Alcalde Municipal, San Salvador, El Salvador. Bienvenido.
Gracias.
Señor Presidente Garcetti, querido amigo, señores miembros del Honorable Consejo de la Ciudad de los Ángeles, suor presidente de ciudades hermanas, Ed Reyes, amigo entrañable, concejal responsable de muchos de mis compatriotas.
Mr. President Garcetti, president of the Sister City Association, members of the council, my good friend Ed Reyes.
Quiero agradecer en nombre de muchos ciudadanos residentes en la Ciudad de los Ángeles y en nuestro querido país, especialmente en la capital de la República, el otorgamiento de este certificado de reconocimiento que no es nada más y nada menos que en este momento dedicado a mis queridos y queridas compatriotas.
On behalf of my brothers and sisters who live in San Salvador and here in Los Angeles, I want to thank you for giving me this certificate of recognition, which I believe is for our community here in Los Angeles.
Pero también quiero aprovechar la oportunidad para solicitarle a este adusto consejo que en oportunidad y en ocasión de que está próximo, la oportunidad de que el presidente Bush pase el extender el TPS, que es un status de protección temporal a los ciudadanos de los países centroamericanos, Nicaragua, Honduras y El Salvador, que este adusto consejo se pronunciara en favor de esta solicitud.
Well, I take this opportunity to ask the Honorable Council to help the Salvadoran community by supporting the extension of the temporary protective status for Salvadorans, Guatemalans and Hondurans and to ask President Bush, which is close to either approve or disapprove the extension of TPS, to please ask you to support that extension because that if it's not approved, it's going to affect thousands of Salvadorans in Los Angeles.
Esta petición la hago consciente del alto valor humano y de unión con los pueblos centroamericanos y en general latinoamericanos que este consejo tiene. Por lo tanto, ratifico mi solicitud y agradezco esta oportunidad que también se da en la celebración del primer aniversario de hermanamiento entre nuestras dos ciudades, San Salvador y Los Angeles. Gracias.
So in light of the first anniversary of the Sister City Agreement, I ask you to please support the extension of TPS. Thank you.
Before we hear some concluding remarks from Mr. Reyes, Mr. Labonge and Mr. Uizar would like to add their comments as well. Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, welcome. Carlos, always good to see you. Mr. Reyes, thank you for hosting the mayor here. And there's many initiatives as we see we should work on, but one of the ones we want to put on our agenda, because from time to time, all of us are challenged with natural disasters. Many of the people who are here in this chambers are city employees who have gone to help in other parts of the world when there's a challenge, whether it's our fire department, whether it's our Department of Water Power, whatever. We should look to strengthen that bond where when you have a natural disaster like you did this year with the floods, that we could be there to help you. And also, I want to let you say that this year, we had our first float in the Hollywood Parade and right on the point was San Salvador, the first person representing our sister city of San Salvador. And guess who got the most cheers? She did, Isabel, as she came down Hollywood Boulevard with the float and saluting all our sister cities, but your sister city was right at the point and got the most cheers. So congratulations and welcome to our city. Ben Bonitas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Uizar.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I too want to welcome the mayor of San Salvador, El Esenciado Carlos Rivas Zamora. It's always exciting to have our friends and compatriots from El Salvador come visit us and we're excited about continuing the work we have been doing with the city and the school district. As you know, when I was on the Board of Education, as a school board president, we worked to establish the first-ever Sister City program with any school district in the United States and the results have been very positive. We took down computers, we established communication, talked about how we could continue to work with the many Salvadorans who are here in the United States and learning about the history of El Salvador so that they do not forget their roots. So welcome. It's always a pleasure to have you here. And Mr. Councilmember Reyes, Carlos Vaquero, both of you have always been a champion for continuing to link us with El Salvador, so thank you very much and I'll extend another invitation to continue to visit us so we could continue the communication. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Uizar, and I want to also extend my official thank you to Mr. Reyes for hosting you. Un gran lider, un gran amigo de mí. Carlos Zamora, somebody who's a great friend and a great leader, somebody who I had the joy of meeting first in San Salvador in council chambers, not unlike these, and who have hosted in my home before. And I know if I was a resident of San Salvador, I'd be very happy with the leadership that I have there. So we want to thank you for your friendship. I know Mr. Villagosa has visited you as well in San Salvador, first as a council member, but now you're both mayors and we look forward to many more years of friendship together. So thank you very much. Felicidades. Bienvenidos. Gracias.
Thank you, councilmembers. We will be introducing the resolution for the extension of the temporary protection status, so that'll be coming before us today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Our next presentation will be from Mr. Uizar, has two presentations.
It gives me great pleasure to recognize some outstanding students from Highland Park Community Northeast Los Angeles. These students have won a contest by which they were asked to create a poster on how Highland Park can become a cleaner, greener and safer community. We all know how important it is for us to be involved in our communities and here we are involving our young ones, involved in not only the arts but involved in helping teach us the adults and tell us the adults about their thinking and how we can make our communities a better place. We all know that Highland Park is already a great place to live, but with their involvement and their contributions, we're making it even a better place to win. I first want to live. I first want to recognize some of the local organizations who sponsored this terrific event, our very own ALA Bridges that works with schools and communities and the city, the Kiwanis Club, the Hathaway Youth Leadership Council who is providing tremendous resources and positive alternatives for the youth in Highland Park, the Historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council and the Luther Burbank Builders Club. And I not only want to recognize these organizations for the support of this contest, but also recognize the many other volunteers, parents and otherwise who were involved in today, in this contest. So with that, please help me in first recognizing the grand prize student who won this. It is first place, it's an elementary student, Diane Faith Hamandron. Congratulations. She'll share a few words with us.
First of all, I want to thank Hathaway Sycamores for appreciating and supporting my drawing. I'm very grateful for this opportunity that my early age, I was invited to visit City Hall to meet with the mayor and district councilmen and for acknowledging us. I became more inspired and with greater confidence to develop my talent. When you look at my drawing with the theme "Help Make Highland Park Beautiful and Clean", it can be seen obviously that everyone were happy working together and make it beautiful and clean. It's really important to help clean our environment so that we can have a fresh air, healthy body and peace of mind. Thank you.
And this was her winning entry on how to make Highland Park a cleaner, safer and more livable community. And now, I want to recognize the first-place middle school student, actually, he's not here, but we'll recognize him. Please help me in giving a round of applause to Vicenta Figueroa. The second-place elementary, there was a tie, Angel Bautista and Ever Lopez.
Which one's on here? You want to lift this up like this? Congratulations. Congratulations, man. Good job, okay? Good job. Next year, first place.
And also, it's the third-place elementary school winner, Alberto Juárez.
Congratulations. Good job. First place for you next year.
And certainly last but not least, the third-place middle school, middle high school student, Maria Ruiz.
Congratulations. First place. Next year. Good job. Thank you. Good job. First place. Next year. Good job. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Good to see you too.
Thank you very much. And also, it gives me great pleasure to announce and introduce the CIF football champions, the Eagle Rock Eagles who are here with us today. If we could all stand up, the football team, everyone, congratulations on winning the CIF championship. I know Mr. Labonge is not too happy about this, but they beat Marshall High School in a very, very close football game, 36-35. Congratulations. And it was a very, very exciting game for those of you who had a chance to witness this game. It was not only exciting, but it was a historic event for the Eagle Rock community in that although the program has been in place since about 1921, it is a first-ever CIF football championship game and we want to recognize the hard work that everyone put into this. We all know how important it is to not only provide a good education to our students in Los Angeles, but also the positive experiences that come by participating in athletic activities, the team building, character building and all the other positive attributes that go with participating in athletic activities. So congratulations. I want to first recognize the head coach of the football team who will say a few words, Jerry Chow. Jerry?
We also want to recognize the assistant coach, Steve Wall.
The MVP of the game, Jerry, Jeremy Camacho. Jeremy threw a last-minute touchdown with time expiring that gave the Eagles the 36-35 victory. Congratulations, Jeremy. And also, I want to recognize America Thomas, the cheerleader squad teacher sponsor. And finally, we have a certificate for all of Eagle Rock High School and I want to invite up the, actually, we have one more before we do that. We want to recognize the hard work that we got a title called "Sports Mom." We know how important it is for these people who are always involved and supportive of athletics. Gladys Pinto Muñoz is a person who's always there for not only the football team, but all the athletics at Eagle Rock High School. Congratulations.
I really appreciate this certificate, but let me tell you, this whole, this last season, I was only there in spirit and in heart because I was traveling a lot because of my work, but my family was there and my husband went to every game, my brother-in-law. I wasn't there this last season, but they know that I was cheering for them and I was behind trying to get more sponsors to help the school. And so I kind of, well, I'm very happy to receive this and I really hope that soon we can get lights at Eagle Rock High School. We really need it. Please, please, okay? Thank you so much.
Now you know why she's one of the biggest fans. She gets things done. And finally, on behalf, we have a certificate that recognizes all of Eagle Rock High School and we want the football captains and their cheerleading captains to please come up and accept this on behalf of the City of Los Angeles and the principal. Salvador Vázquez.
Velasco. Velasco. Where are you?
While we're taking the picture, Mr. Labonge, I know I wanted to say a thing or two from the Marshall side.
Well, thank you very much. I just want to congratulate the great Eagles of Eagle Rock and Jeremy Camacho, you were on fire that night. It was a tremendous game. It was cool in the Coliseum and preceded the Taft-Crenshaw game, the city invitational title. I was very proud of my high school, John Marshall, that fought all its way. You were the Northern League champs and it was two seconds, but that two seconds, remember that your whole life, because how fate was the fate of the game and you had great calls and I know Marshall was fighting real hard, but I was so impressed with your quarterback as a barrister who always said, "I think Steve Wall, you and I graduated at the same time." Were you number 14 there? What year you graduate?
69.
69. You were a great quarterback at Eagle Rock. There's no pleasure for a John Marshall guy to beat Eagle Rock and we did win in 69 when I was there, but you won this year and it just, it's a great, I just stand to Eagle Rock to congratulate you, but also your quarterback, that last drive and everything that you did, the linemen, everybody worked together as a team. Congratulate your coach at Eagle Rock High School. I'm just proud of the Northern League and your principal and your moms and it's all support. And members, when we talk about what we want to do to help young people and help schools, help these young people who go to class, who get involved in the drill team and the band and all the other things and the sports teams and that helps them, make them stronger as students and that's just be one of our matras as we move forward. Congratulate the city invitational champs, Eagle Rock High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Wait, sorry, Mr. Reyes wants to say something as well. Mr. Reyes.
I just want to stand and congratulate Eagle Rock High for their accomplishments. Gladys for being the second mom to most of the students that were in Eagle Rock, the football. She's very active in the community, but more importantly, I believe you're showing the rest of the young people in the Northeast that you can be champions, that despite the odds and conditions that we have, being a park poor area, that you have the same standards that got us, the ability to move forward and make things, make good things happen. So congratulations and hope to see you at the college level, if not the pro levels, representing Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you could also permit another minute to have our principal, Mr. Velasco, say a few words. Mr. Velasco, say a few words.
Thank you and good morning. I just want to make sure that at least three more people get recognized. There are so many, many people that put time in there, but definitely Mrs. Lor, our AP of Activities, is instrumental in putting hundreds of hours to make sure that things happen right. Mr. Gell, who's Assistant Principal of Athletics in our school, brought in a lot of excitement this year and brought in the ability to think that we could make it there. Also Coach McKay, somebody mentioned his ability. We want to make sure that he's also recognized today. Today, I want to make sure that we thank you for the honor that you provided us with this recognition on behalf of our school, community, the students, the parents, the staff, and the community as a whole. Thank you. Thank you very much for having us here today.
Thank you all very much. And congratulations to all of the Eagles.
Congratulations once again. And I know that this council member with the support of this council, working with the school district, we're going to get to work on those lights. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rizar. Like to recognize next, a council member from the fourth district, that Marshall High School alum, Mr. Tom Labange.
Thank you very much, Larry Green. You're one person who knows me back there. Appreciate that. Members, we're going to salute somebody who served this city for 35 years as a great attorney. Please welcome Tom Thomas C. Hogenson and his lovely wife Ruth Ann for a commendation for the 35 years of service. Thomas, Assistant General Manager, the Corporate Services Organization of the Department of Water and Power. And as I said, retiring after 35 years of dedicated service. Tom joined the city in 1970 as a Deputy City Attorney in the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office. And he's served in various functions within the City Attorney's Office, promoting up the way, but showing leadership not just in a, as an attorney, but also as someone who could move agendas, make things happen correctly, and serve the people well. Tom was appointed as the Managing Assistant of Civil Liability Division in 1991, responsible again for supervising attorneys to staff to defend the city and its employees on personal injury and civil rights litigation. Several promotions all the way up, and he found his way to 111 North Hope Street, where 111 North Hope, the great John Ferraro Building, which is so special at Water and Power. And it's so special that our city attorney does put city attorneys at Water and Power, as well as the airport and other places, the harbor, to help sure that our interests are held. And Thomas, you certainly did that over your course of time. I just wanted to thank you. I know you graduated from Purdue University, a great boiler maker, with a Bachelor's of Science in Industrial Engineering. He attended UCLA Law School, graduated in 1966, if I have that correct. And also served our country as a captain of the United States Army, and very involved. His tour duty was in Vietnam during 1969. He's a member of the California State Bar and the American Board of Trial Advocates. He is an arbitrator, mediator, a judge pro temp for the Los Angeles Superior Court. But more than that, he lives in La Cañada. And La Cañada is right next to Flintridge. And Flintridge is named after Senator Flynn, who wrote the legislation to allow Los Angeles to get the water from Owens Valley. Is that correct there, counselor? And so you're close to that. You're close to that. You're right up the street from the City of Angels above us there in La Cañada. But you have a beautiful wife Ruth Ann and two adult children and two grandchildren, Jolene and William Turner, if I say that correctly there. But with all that said, 35 years of dedicated commitment and focus, because as an attorney, you got to read everything. You got to read it and make sure that it's understood well. We present this resolution on behalf of all my colleagues and also Mr. Parks, my great colleague here who is also second to this great motion. All of us here sign and salute you, Thomas C. Hogenson, for your years of service on behalf of the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much, Thomas.
Thank you very much. Councilman, thank you very much. And thank you for the city council for this resolution. It's been a long 35 years, but I'm looking forward to retirement here. But I've had a very enjoyable career, working with the City Attorney's Office for 31 years and having the opportunity to appear before this body. It's been a very, very interesting time and I've enjoyed it very much. The last four years, I've been with the Department of Water and Power in a management position and it has had other challenges, which I didn't really realize as being the city attorney on many of the cases that were over there. But I've enjoyed it and I thank you very much for this recognition today. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas.
And let me introduce my wife, Ruth Ann, who I'm very happy to have with me today.
I'd like to also recognize Councilmember Parks. Would like to say a few words as well. Councilmember Parks.
Tom, I just want to say thank you for many years, the advice you've given to the city and particularly the Police Department. And that, as we've seen you and others leave us, that void is significant. You take Patty Tubert now is over at LAX. You went to DWP. But I mean, the legacy that you leave here is for is that very common sense advice that helps departments get their job done is going to be missed. As we've seen some of those voids in the pension system, where attorneys that were there for 20 years went on and how do we survive after? And I just want to say thank you for not only your last four years, but you were a cornerstone of good, solid advice for the city of LA and departments. And we appreciate you. And we just hope that you really retire and get the benefits of all that 35 years of work. Don't be silly like other people that run for office and get another job and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Appreciate it. Our next presentation will be...
I still got 207 on the clock.
My apologies. Go ahead, Mr. Labange. I thought you were yielding some time back.
Next on Sunrise will be a very special day, because tomorrow we celebrate the 75th anniversary of John Marshall High School. And with me this morning is Laval Lun, one of the great graduates of John Marshall High School, who saw the schoolhouse be built. And also with me today, and don't be afraid there, is my English teacher, Burr Hickman, who has since retired. Give him a big hand. Thank you, Larry, very much there. John Marshall High School, when built, and we talk about the problems that we're having building high schools now, there was a great controversy when built in 1931, whether it was going to be built right there by the Prospect Street in Talmadge, or whether it was going to be at its original site. The school was built in 1939, 1931, excuse me, for under $836,000. It is a great high school that has educated many. But most importantly, I think Dr. David Ho, a most recent graduate, who developed much of the medicines that we have now to deal with the challenges of HIV. Very special graduate, Dr. David Ho. Some of you may know Mike Haynes, the great athlete, Roger Hamm, the great ITA graduate. Come on up here, Roger. Join in with me right here. Andy Reid, the head coach of the Philadelphia Eagles, John Brown, and the great concert pianist Julie Newmar, the great actress. All of them made special. So tomorrow, we're going to gather, unfortunately, at La Cañada Country Club. I say that because I'm such an LA guy and we just follow Tom's La Cañada salute. But we're going to have our anniversary. And I just wanted to pick one great teacher and one great graduate, followed by another great graduate. All of you salute John Marshall High School on our 75th anniversary tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Mr. Hickman?
I was at a party, which was almost as fine as this, in Sydney with the Lord Mayor. And she made us wear these for security. And she had 1,200 guests at that New Year's Eve party up behind the Opera House. And I brought to Tom a copy of a 1928 drawing of proposed tunnels for Los Angeles. 1928, there are not many people in here who are in that era.
Thank you very much. Did you tell the mayor of Sydney, I said hello? You know, I know her. She's very nice.
She's very fine.
Use my name anywhere you go, Burr. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Labange. Our next presentation is Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. You know, it's not often that we have an opportunity to recognize a true hero in the city of Los Angeles. But today, we are able to recognize Ara Domigian. He's a member of the Community Surveillance Team in Sanlito Hanga in the Second Council District. And on December 7th, at around 2:00 AM, he was returning home from work and traveling north on the 405 freeway, when he saw the taillights of a vehicle moving in a very unusual fashion. Ara followed the vehicle and upon approaching the Devonshire off-ramp, saw that it stopped near the center divider. He quickly activated his rear window amber warning lights and deployed several of those warning flares to stop drivers who were moving very quickly in that area. He then went to the vehicle to see if the individual was okay, and saw that the vehicle was still running and that it was quickly burning with its engine still running. He placed a call to 911 and unfortunately was placed on hold for a moment. So he directed his call directly to the LA County Fire Department and requested for CHP and actually the city fire paramedics units to be dispatched. Upon reaching the vehicle, he saw a single occupant, a woman who was slumped in the seat and badly injured with gashes on her face and not moving. He couldn't get the door open. It was jammed because of the accident. He immediately thought, used his flashlight to break the window, to shatter it, and to open the car, and pull this woman dead weight out of a burning car. And in fact, after he moved this woman to a safe place, the entire passenger compartment was engulfed in flames. Now, he is someone who took someone else's life literally in his own hands and tried to save them. The CHP arrived soon after that and the ambulance and all of the other individuals who do this for a living. But Ara has been someone who's dedicated to the city and truly is a hero in the city of Los Angeles. We have joining us today, members from the Community Surveillance Team represented by Richard Nudike, Captain Lizaraga from Van Nuys LAPD, Leland Tang from our CHP, and I think some of your family members that are here today who should be very proud of Ara. So it is my pleasure and I hope you will all join me in thanking him for his true heroism and someone in the city of Los Angeles that we can call our hero. Let's give him a great round of applause.
Yeah, my name is Richard Nudike. And on behalf of Ara Domigian, the other members of the Van Nuys Community Surveillance Team and myself, I'd like to thank members of council, especially Wendy Gruel and her staff, Captain Lizaraga and Leland Tang, for taking time to recognize Ara's heroic actions. I have the pleasure of working with a group of people who have embraced the concept of active citizenship. My good friend Ara has provided an outstanding example for all of us to follow. I don't know if anybody in this room has any political connections, but Ara is preparing to take the entrance exam for the Los Angeles Police Academy. And any help anyone can provide, I know will be greatly appreciated. Given his demonstrated commitment to public safety and personal courage, this city would be well served by adding Ara Domigian to the ranks of the Los Angeles Police Department. Thank you very much.
If I can just add my gratitude to Ms. Gruel and to this council for recognizing the fine work and the spirit, really, that Ara represents by his volunteer work at Van Nuys in the Community Surveillance Team and as well as his dedication to just basically public safety, as you saw from the incident he was involved in. Truly a great heart, cares for, for other people and doesn't let anything stand in his way. So we really appreciate the recognition for him and we'll certainly do everything we can to help him join our fine department.
I just wanted to add that what he did was what we've trained our officers, LAPD officers and CHP officers to do time and time again. And without thought and without hesitation, he stepped in and did something fabulous. So he definitely deserves a commendation. We've also forwarded this up to Sacramento for the commissioner's commendation. So we wish him luck and we wish he'd join the Highway Patrol, but we know that he would be a great asset to the city of Los Angeles. And being a city resident, I would be very proud to have him working with the Los Angeles Police Department. Thank you very much.
Ara is a very humble hero. So he, we just want to say again, thank you very much for what you did in literally saving this woman's life. And it's nice to know that on the streets of, and highways of Los Angeles, we have people like Ara who will help in a minute's notice to, to save someone's life. Thank you very much, Madam President, for... We'll move on to the next... Oh, someone wants to say something.
Yes, Councilman Cardenas.
Yes, I just wanted to thank you, Ara, for bringing back a special memory for my family. And it was even more touching that you were asked to say a few words and you said, no, that's okay. In the 1940s, when my father was a migrant farm worker, he had just gotten here just a few years earlier, I found out after he passed away in 1993, that he saved a man from a fire. And I got to look into that man's eyes, three, four years after my father passed away, after I heard the story. And he recounted that story to me, how he saved his life. It is a small world and you never know how things are going to come back full circle. His son that was born after my father saved Mr. Cervantes out of that fire in the 1940s, his son who was born in the 1950s, later on became a friend of the family. We didn't know we had this history together. And he later on became my accountant. He went on to USC and got his degree. And he's a very successful person with a wonderful family as children himself. But what you just did reminded me 100% how humble people can do wonderful things. And if you just, like was said earlier, you just do what you're supposed to. You act without hesitation. It's the right thing to do and wonderful things will ensue. So I would just want to say, it truly, truly is an honor for us to honor you today and to thank you for your humble works and your humble ability to just be a good person. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next presentation will be by President Eric Garcetti. And he'll be joined by Councilman Herb Wesson. Our last and final presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I'd like to ask all the WorkSource Centers that we are honoring and the OneSource Centers to come forward and gather around for this recognition. And I want to thank our incoming Chair of the Housing, Community and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wesson, as well for joining us in celebrating the best of all of the WorkSource Centers and OneSource Centers that do workforce development undertakings throughout the city of Los Angeles. There are two adult and three youth centers that we are honoring today. And I think we all know that funding is getting tighter and tighter and tighter from Washington. We've seen a reduction in the dollars that are coming to Los Angeles. So these folks are making do with less. They're doing more with less and they're making sure that they have clients that come in and can transform their lives, whether it's a young person looking for their first job, whether it's somebody with a disability who hasn't been able to get into the workplace in the way that they want to, or whether it's somebody who's in the workplace already looking to better their lot. The centers that we have today are in your districts, colleagues. I know Mr. Zine is a big fan of Chatsworth-Northridge WorkSource Center that also works in Mr. Smith's district and is based in Mr. Smith's district. And that's operated by Build Rehabilitation Industries. And they operate an incredible center. Their motto is, "We are the WorkSource Center with a heart." They traditionally place the highest combined percentage of folks with disabilities, seniors, offenders, and those limited English speakers into employment. Secondly, in Hollywood, we have the WorkSource Center in Hollywood. Hollywood WorkSource Center, which is managed by the Managed Career Solutions, Inc., does an extraordinary job with a number of different programs, from our healthcare career ladders to get people into the nursing profession and as medical professionals. Over 12,000 people go into their center right there at Sunset and Wilcox each year for consultations in English, Spanish, and Armenian. And they do just an extraordinary job. Those are the two adult centers that we have. And then the youth centers that were our star performers, and they've each received a star with four stars on them, is El Proyecto del Barrio, OneSource Youth Opportunity Center in South Valley and North Valley. They won for two different categories. So they got the entire valley covered in terms of youth employment opportunities. They've given services in the last year, program year, to over 1,000 youth. 211 youth participated in basic math and reading remediation. 512 were placed in jobs. 800 youth went to post-secondary education that may not have otherwise. And they are recognized by the National Science Foundation, the only place in the country that got one of their young female trainees as the poster child for the national campaign there for a nationwide technical education campaign. And then lastly, the Los Angeles Youth Opportunity Movement, the Watts Site. I know in Madam President's... I know in Madam President's district there, OneSource Youth Opportunity Center in Watts...
Yo Watts!
Yo Watts, there you go. It's done an extraordinary job placing youth in unsubsidized employment, in getting the businesses that are there to work with the young people so they can see what jobs and employment and futures are like. And then also, they received the Department of Labor's recognition in July 2004 of Excellence for serving out-of-school youth, the only youth program in the country to receive that award. So I want to turn over to Mr. Wesson to see if he wants to make a few comments, and then we'll hand these certificates out, and let's all give them a round of applause for their great work.
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Garcetti for inviting me to participate in this award ceremony. I want to indicate to all of the agencies how proud I am of you, the great work that you've done, and how creative you've been, you know, to have less resources and still be able to deliver these services that are needed. And lastly, to say that I am very excited about taking over for Mr. Garcetti and working with you in the future. So again, I'll ask everybody to give them another round of applause.
Together, we will present these certificates. Mr. Wesson, you want to do the first one? Okay, Los Angeles Youth Opportunity Movement, the OneSource Youth Opportunity Center, Watts Site. Step forward.
And an old friend!
Everybody knows Mr. Wesson. Want to say something real quick?
Well, on behalf of the Los Angeles Youth Opportunity Movement, all the staff, hard-working staff that are sitting in the background cheering us on, it's because of your hard work and dedication that we're able to serve thousands of young people in the South LA and particularly the Watts area. So congratulations, all Yo Watts staff.
El Proyecto del Barrio, and I know we've got a number of fans out in the valley of El Proyecto.
I want to thank the council, specifically Tony Cardenas, Alex Padilla, Wendy Grul, Mr. Zine, Dennis Zine, for being there for us. We are there for you. We think that there are less resources, but in terms of funding, but we also believe there are more resources out in the private sector, and we need to ask so we get more for our communities, not less. Si se puede. Thank you.
Next, in beautiful CD 13, the Hollywood WorkSource Center. Congratulations to MCS Rehabilitation.
I would like to thank the President of City Council and all the city council for this great honor. We are very proud to be serving the city of Los Angeles and especially the most important asset of the city of Los Angeles, and that's the people itself. So thank you very much.
Nicely put. And our last one, Chatsworth-Northridge WorkSource Center, Build Rehabilitation Industries.
I accept this on behalf of my staff who did an outstanding job in order to receive this accolade, and they earned it.
Thank you all very much, and I especially want to thank CDD and the WIB, Robert Sands, Manny Chavez, the folks over at WIB, Bruce Stensley, our chairman, Charlie Wu as well, and I know you're in good hands with Mr. Wesson.
And I think Councilman Zine wants to say something, and then I want to say something too.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to congratulate all of you, and I've been to a couple of the WorkSource Centers, and to see the wonderful work you do to help people, it's all about helping the people of Los Angeles. So congratulations to the Barrio de, Barrio de what?
El Barrio.
El Protejo de Barrio. I've been there, I've been to the WorkSource Center in Chatsworth, I've been to the WorkSource Center in Van Nuys, I've been to the WorkSource Center in West Valley. So for all of you, congratulations, you are helping the people of Los Angeles achieve whatever they need to achieve, goals and objectives. So God bless you, and thank you for being here, and thank you for the award, and keep the good work going, and remember, Marshall High School. Thank you.
And let me add, you know, again, thank you, thank you Eric and Herb for honoring this great resource to the residents of Los Angeles. I particularly want to shout out for Yo Watts. We have been having some serious issues in Watts. We always do, but it seems violence has increased in the last month. We have some kids who are feeling hopeless and helpless, and Yo Watts has been the place where kids have been able to turn away from gang violence and turn away from hopelessness, and found opportunities, found careers, found jobs, and you are really saving lives in Watts. So thank you for what you're doing. Oh, Councilmember Smith.
I just want to join with my colleagues in congratulating these great providers. This is a program that I've been familiar with in the city for a long time. We've had this program, and it's probably one of the best expenditures of our federal grant money and our city money we could possibly make, because it helps people from San Pedro to Chatsworth. Every part of the city participates, and every part of the city benefits from the hard work all of you're doing out there. So thank you on behalf of all the citizens for just the great job all of you do, and it's the best money we spent, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Again, thank you to Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Wesson and all of the attendees today. Mr. Clerk, I think we're going to call the roll.
Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weezer, Labanche, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present and equor, Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves, Mr. Smith seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those have been approved.
Madam President, now would be time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Thank you. We will go to public comment at this moment. If we can, call the following individuals, Raymond Yu, Michael Corion, and after that we'll have the South Central Farmers.
Just a few minutes, let me get my paper. Okay. Good morning. My name is Raymond Yu. I have some issue to say. Okay, this Sunday, there will be first day of Chinese New Year welcoming year of the dog, 4704, Gong He Fatai. This Sunday, only there will be celebrations throughout Chinatown, plus Tianhai Temple has the lion dance and dragon dance, and there will be overcrowded in Chinatown streets this Sunday. That was option one. Two, Golden Dragon Parade, Saturday, February 4th, 4th day of February 2006, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. The parade will be on, beginning at Caesar Chavez and North Broadway, Bernard Street, North Hill Street, and the parade will end at North Hill and Old Street. And the third issue is the Firecracker 10K1 this, next to Sunday, 12th February 2006, 6:00 a.m. through noon, at North Broadway and College Street. Firecracker 10K1 course will run through Elyshon Park. Listen, when there's a Golden Dragon Parade, please have the LEDOT engineers by prohibit modifying traffic signals to flashing red lights or yellow lights all off during the parade in operation for Saturday, February 4th, 2006, until the new ornamental posts are being replaced, will be being replaced by CTNF contractors. When they do the Golden Dragon Parade this year, no flashing red or yellow lights on the parade while North Broadway and Hill Street, but the old-school classic posts will be viewed finally before replacing the brand-new post to be replaced at all North Broadway intersections in Chinatown. That's what they call Chinatown streetscape phase two, North Broadway intersection, like construction project, and little Joe's building replacement project to New Blossom Plaza on North Broadway and College Street, North East Corner. That's the Bill Street lighting and the community development department. So don't forget to call Chinese Chamber of Commerce during Chinese New Year Day, and have a safe Chinese New Year Day, Year of the Dog.
Thank you very much, Raymond. Michael Corion, and then we'll go to the South Central Farmers.
Hello, my name is Michael Corion, and I come to you on two issues. One issue is the tree issues. We had a tree fall down in District 14 on someone's car. The city neglected to pay the bill, yet the city neglects to maintain their trees. They turn around and say, "We can't trim the trees, we can't cut the trees, we can't remove the trees." But yet, when a tree falls, it's not our fault. And this goes on in all the city. Somewhere down the line, the city has to do the right thing and be responsible for their trees. One more issue, Mr. Weezer, we have a problem in El Serrano. We have a slide that was caused by a contractor, and it's interfering with the quality of life of my children. They have asthma, and the city's put a Band-Aid on that problem. They ruptured the line, took down half of the mountain, and all they did was put a Band-Aid on it. They stand a street sweeper out to clean tons of mud up, and every time it rains, the mud comes, the rest of the mud comes down, the dust. I have two children and a grandson who have asthma, and this is a quality of life issue for them, and all they do is send a street sweeper out. I'd appreciate if somebody can do something about that. I have that issue here, if somebody wants to see the paperwork on the tree.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, you must be a resident of your district.
As a resident of my district, just for information for those watching, sir, the city does give a permit for trimming of trees if you want one. In fact, we waive the fees if you choose to do it, and you can contact the City Department of Public Works and they'll assist you in getting that done.
And that's after the fact. The tree's your tree, it fell.
You just said you couldn't get a permit to trim. I'm telling you, you can get a permit.
I know that.
The fees are made. As far as trimming of trees, the city has a seven-year cycle, which is a nationally-recognized cycle time for trimming of trees, which we do.
Which has changed over the years, okay?
Now, this is our standard.
When I spoke to Mr. Villarrealosa, and he was our councilman at that time, he was aware of it, and he admitted the fact that they have neglected the trees over the years because of budget cuts, okay? It's been seven and nine to 11 to four, sometimes they're done more, okay? They're still your trees, and they fell down. If my car had no brakes and I hit all the city vehicles, I'd be responsible, regardless of whether I knew the brakes were bad or not. It's your tree, and you guys know that they're falling down, yet no one takes responsibility for it.
Thank you, and I know what's here is from the council member's office that will help you for the district that you're in. Thank you very much. Please, representative from South Central Farmers.
Good morning, everybody. My English is not very well. Please, somebody translate for me.
Yes, we'll have the translator come over. Un momento, por favor.
Mi nombre es Josefina Medina, y yo vengo a este consejo a pedir como se han dado cuenta semana a semana, somos los campesinos de Sur Centro de 41 y Alameda.
My name is Josefina Medina, and I've come here week after week to ask, we are the farmers of South Central from 41st and Alameda. La razón que venimos, yo creo que ustedes la saben, de este consejo salió la decisión de que se destruyera ese espacio verde. I think you know the reason that I am here. The decision came from this council for this green space to be destroyed. La razón que nosotros nos resistimos a perder la célula del pulmón que hemos forjado nosotros con nuestros brazos al cultivar más de 500 árboles que producen oxígeno. The reason we are resistant is because we are refusing to lose the cell that came out of our lungs to save those 500, more than 500 green trees that are producing oxygen. El miércoles pasado, yo tuve la oportunidad de venir y me escucharon, y el señor Cárdenas me dijo algo de que un gran juez había fallado en contra de nosotros. Last Wednesday I came, and Mr. Cárdenas told me that the decision had been made by a judge who had ruled against us. Le quería decir algo, señor Cárdenas. Usted dijo en esta cámara tan distinguida que un juez muy poderoso dictaminó que el terreno que nosotros hemos convertido en un pulmón verde. You said in this, in these chambers that there was a judge who had ruled on a tree or a green space that we have turned into a green lung. Dentro del Sur Centro pertenece a la persona a quien ustedes se lo vendieron. De esta manera dio la impresión de querer lavarse las manos de este asunto. The person that owns this land is the person that you sold it to, and you appear to want to wash your hands of this issue. Sabemos que el Sur Centro de nuestra ciudad padece de aire extremadamente contaminado que resulta en una epidemia de enfermedad respiratoria entre nuestros niños. The air of South Central in this city suffers from contaminated air that affects the lungs of our children. Pero no fue este consejo el mismo que vendió este terreno público al señor Harold Weiss. And was it not this very council that sold this public land to Harold Weiss? Que ahora pretende destruir el jardín y levantar un bodegón que solo servirá para envenenar más el aire de esta área. And now tries to destroy this garden and build a warehouse that would only continue to destroy the air in this area. Que no fue este consejo el que vendió esos terrenos a un precio debajo de su verdadero valor, al que realizó esta venta en secreto sin darnos a los campesinos ni al público general la oportunidad de oponerse a la venta de estos terrenos. Was it not this very council that sold this land at a low price in secret and denied us, we farmers, the right to fight for this land? Señor Cárdenas, de nada sirve ocultar nuestra responsabilidad detrás de las decisiones de las cortes. El error inicial lo cometió este consejo al no tomar en cuenta los intereses de nuestra comunidad. We cannot hide our responsibility behind the decisions of the courts. The initial error was made by this council in order, because they did not take into account the needs of our community. Ni todos los residentes de la ciudad de Los Ángeles ahora de nuevo dan la espalda a nuestra comunidad. And all the residents of the city of Los Angeles once again are turning their backs to our community. Nosotros solo pedimos que reconozcan este error y que lo corrijan dándonos la oportunidad de poder comprar este terreno. The only thing we're asking for is that you recognize that you've made an error and to fix it by giving us the opportunity to buy this land. Lo último que quería decirles, señores concejales, con el respeto que me merecen, pero también nosotros exigimos respeto, y yo soy un producto de levantarme y venir a hablar con ustedes porque no es justo. Gracias. This is, with the respect that I give you, council members, I wish you would look at me with respect, because I am the product of having had enough time to come here and speak before you.
Please, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Vanessa Costa, and I'm, good morning. Yesterday I read in the L.A. Times that Villarrealosa, our mayor, had gone to Washington, D.C. to sit in, to start a committee and sit in a committee to fight poverty across the nation, and he wants to be the leader to fighting poverty here in Los Angeles. I, when I first came here, I asked Ms. Perry for us, all of the women, to get together and fight this poverty and all the problems that we have in the area, and to be the first in Los Angeles to do that, and the first in the nation. I just wanted to remind Mr. Villarrealosa and the rest of the city council that we do have all these wonderful programs, and they're already set and they're implementing, and that is the South Central Garden, the South Central Garden on Alameda and 41st Street. And instead of dismantling it and what is already working for the community in fighting poverty and trying to recreate another one that will use government funds that are not readily available, our mayor should consider to help fund the current project that is nationally and internationally known. The garden has received different organizations to come and visit this garden in Los Angeles in our wonderful city, not just from other nations, not just locally, but from other nations too. The South Central Farmers in the South Central Garden, we're asking that we fight and keep this garden, because not just the community is watching over it, but also internationally and other organizations. and other organizations outside of our nation are watching this whole process. And as you know, this day has been lifted and on Monday morning, there will be hearings on this matter and depending on the outcome, whether or not there is an injunction, the community will fight against this poverty as it is. And we ask our mayor not to misuse the funds to create new programs, but to use the currently one.
Thank you.
Good morning, city council members. My name is Alberto Clavato, currently is a Los Angeles college student and a South Central farmer. The South Central Farm represents our culture, our identity. It represents family space, nutritious food, tradition, heirloom seeds. It also represents safety for our community. Fourteen years of hard work cannot be overlooked. The community farm does not take any city funds apart from the land use. This project is very beneficial for the community. It should be emulated instead of being destroyed. South Central Farmer, this body has the power to find and turn aside for the developer. South Central Farmers, feeding families, feeding friends, feeding hope, y aquí estamos y no nos vamos.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Melrose Larry Green, followed by Yvonne Michelle Autry and Felicia Ford.
Thank you. What a great day it is to be here. I want to start out by saying we've got Congressman Dick Gephardt here in the chamber, one of the greatest Democrats in history, and I want, before I even get into my comments, I want to see Gephardt and Villarigosa in 2008 and you got, and I'm a Republican and I will campaign my tuchus off for you. I love you, Congressman. Welcome to the L.A. City Council.
Melrose, can I ask, can I apologize for one minute? If you could hold off, Councilmember Cárdenas had pushed his button on the South Central Farmers and I'm sorry, we did not see that. No, 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 we'll get back to you.
Señora.
Save your time. We'll be right back.
Le quería dar una respuesta de unas cosas que comentó hace unos minutos. I wanted to respond to some of the comments that you made a few minutes ago. Algo que, no sé dónde entendió que nosotros vendimos esa propiedad a este señor por querer hacerlo. Lo hicimos porque el juez, aquí es en este país, nosotros tenemos poder, pero un juez la balancia de poder aquí en este país es que los jueces nos pueden dar manda a nosotros también. Y eso fue un demanda del juez a nosotros que hay que regresar esa propiedad a este señor porque nosotros lo compramos, casi lo quitamos de él hace unos años, pero este juez dio su demanda a nosotros que nosotros teníamos que venderlo para atrás a él. No fue una acción de opción, fue una acción de una demanda del juez y nosotros no tenemos más poder que él. Y si alguien cree que nosotros podemos comprarlo otra vez, etc., eso será posiblemente una opción, okay? En un precio que él dice, no nosotros, etc. Eso sí es una opción en el futuro, pero ese acto de nosotros que nosotros vendimos la propiedad a este señor, eso fue una demanda del juez, no fue una acción como una opción de nosotros. Solamente yo quería que usted entendiera eso. Y también avisara usted que nosotros podemos comprarlo otra vez, es posibilidad, pero es algo que tenemos que identificar, de dónde va a venir ese dinero, etc., etc., etc. Es algo mucho más complicado de nomás decir, bueno, lo vamos a comprar y es todo. No, es mucho más complicado para hacer eso. Y ese dinero, si lo vamos a comprar, ese dinero viene de todos ustedes, de toda la ciudad de Los Angeles, no nosotros. Nosotros no tenemos dinero de nosotros. Todo lo que manejamos nosotros es de la gente, es de la comunidad de Los Angeles, okay? Quería clarificar eso, que eso fue una demanda del juez, no fue un acto de una opción de nosotros. Y tengo que decir en inglés también para respetar a todos. Y en el tema de respetar, por eso le estoy hablando en español, estoy escuchando lo que usted está diciendo y todos ustedes y por eso les doy dando ese respeto, okay? Como cualquier otra persona. I just wanted to clarify that this act of us returning that property to the former owner was not an option for the city of Los Angeles. We had a responsibility to give it back to him, to sell it back to him, to clean up that transaction. That was a demand of the court. And the powers, the way they are balanced in this country are that we are a powerful body, but we have a balance of power and the courts tell us what to do sometimes. And in this case, they did. So we don't have the ability to override the courts. Now, the truth of the matter is, if you're asking us to buy that property back now, that is an option, but you need to understand that the money doesn't just come out of thin air. We would have to identify the millions of dollars, where we would get that money to buy it, we would have to justify it and then make that happen. Another thing as well, this body does not have its own money. Everything that we manage, everything that we do belongs to the people of Los Angeles. So whatever we do, we have to justify to the people of Los Angeles. It's not like we just have this money lying around and we can go around buying property. No, it's not that simple. It's much more complicated than that. And also, I just wanted to clarify that you mentioned the issue of respecting and listening to you. I am listening to you. That's why I'm speaking to you in two languages, to give you as much respect that I possibly can, to let you know that I am listening, I take this seriously and I do respect you. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, it's not a back and forth right now, so thank you. Melrose Larry Green, appreciate it.
Thank you. I'd like to get back to my little public comment, my measly one minute and thirty-four seconds. My name is Melrose Larry Green and I want to first start out by saying, congratulations, Mayor Villarigosa will be giving the response to President Bush's State of the Union on Tuesday, the response in Spanish. And I congratulate the Democratic Party for picking my friend, the mayor of L.A., hopefully the next Vice President of the United States, Antonio Villarigosa. On a serious note, not that that was not serious, but there's some very heavy stuff going on in the world right now and I'm going to say to you what I'm also going to say to the Congress and to the New York City Council. I'm calling on the L.A. City Council to pass a resolution, quiet please, condemning terrorism in the Palestinian Authority, supporting a democratic state of Israel. And I wish that the hard left would embrace the results of the 2004 election the way they're embracing the results of the Hamas victory in Palestine. I support the state of Israel. I do not support the destruction of the state of Israel. And I am calling on this body to pass a motion supporting, like Rabbi Hyer says in this morning's Daily News, a democratic state of Israel, calling on Hamas to recognize the state of Israel. And if this fails fifteen to nothing, I want to see it fail fifteen to nothing. But if it passes thirteen to two or eight to seven, whatever it is, I want to see it. You bet I'm Jewish, you bet my grandparents were in the Holocaust, and you bet I support Israel.
Thank you.
Thank you. My time is up. Welcome Congressman Gephardt. I love you Congressman Gephardt. You better run for president again. You got my vote.
Thank you, Melrose Larry Green. Yvonne Michelle Autry and Felicia, followed by Felicia Ford.
No, 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 let Eric introduce.
Eric, I'm sorry, if we could ask the speakers just one moment, Eric's going to make a special introduction. Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I just wanted to, as already been mentioned by Larry, we've got a very esteemed guest here in our council chambers, no stranger to Los Angeles, somebody who has graced this city with his presence numerous times, somebody who was the minority leader in Congress of the Democrats, but really was a great bipartisan leader in this country, somebody who distinguished himself about fighting for cities because he came from cities and now he's in the private sector, but we welcome him with the Los Angeles welcome arms that we always do. Please, give a warm round of applause to Congressman Dick Gephardt.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Is President the right?
Sure, President, yeah, that's fine.
Greeting. Thank you, President Garcetti, and thank all of you for allowing me to be here today. Larry, thank you for, I didn't pay you to say all that, right? Okay, so just so we're clear. It's a great honor to be here. Los Angeles is a wonderful, great city, not only of the United States, but the world. The whole world watches how you solve major tough problems and I want to congratulate all of you for all of the hard work that you do to solve the big challenges that you face. I went to the House of Representatives about thirty years ago now. I've been out for about a year and a half and I often say to people that I'm more optimistic and idealistic about democracy in our country than the first day I walked into the House of Representatives. And I say that because I so am in such awe of the process of self-governance. I started as a precinct captain in St. Louis in 1965 and I worked my way up toward committeemen and then I got to run for the city council. I served on the city council in St. Louis for five years and everything I learned about politics, I learned there and as a precinct captain. Politics never changes. All of politics is local. Whether you're in Congress, whether you're president, whether you're governor, whether you're mayor, it all happens in the streets. And I just want to end by saying how gratified I was to see you listening to citizens who came here with a grievance and a problem that they wanted to present to you. And I'm glad that as a city council, you still stay connected directly to the grassroots of this country. That's why this is a great country and that's why this is a very, very great city. Thank you for letting me be here today.
Thank you Congressman Gephardt. We have two more public speakers. Mr. Zein, you, Mr. Zein, did you ask to be recognized?
Yes, President Weiss, just in response to Mr. Melrose and to our viewers, just to address that, that we have a motion, a resolution being introduced, going through the process, to condemn those hate statements toward Israel, the annihilation of Israel and Jews throughout the world. We have taken aggressive action. It's going through a committee and there'll be more on that, but I was wanting to introduce that motion to condemn the people of other lands who are calling for the elimination of Israel and Jews. So we have that rule under control. And I will admit to the record that I am not Jewish, I am Lebanese, also the president of the Jewish Home for the Agent Executive, so I'm very concerned about the cause. Thank you.
Okay. Two public speaker cards, Yvonne Michelle Autry, followed by Felicia Ford.
Thank you for an opportunity to address the city council. My name is Yvonne Michelle Autry. I was born in Inglewood. I've lived here the majority of my life and I'm speaking on a completely unrelated issue, although antisemitism, racism is kind of the reason that I'm here. It's a basic discrimination or racial discrimination issue, particularly regarding racial profiling, police brutality and the use of excessive force, especially in black communities perpetrated against black people, people of color and poor people, homeless people. Most recently, I had reviewed an article in a USC publication and there's a growing concern of racial profiling. However, like I had mentioned Tuesday when I spoke with the Three Strikes Group, there was a woman commissioned by your council who kind of downplayed the existence of racial profiling, equating or justifying, equating being a person of color or associating people of color with criminal activity, specifically prostitution, drug addiction, alcoholism. In that way, she was justifying or covering up the fact that racial profiling is in existence and it's actually escalating, but it's justifiable because she's saying that most of the people profiled are black and that they're involved in criminal activity. This type of justification, I think of increased police brutality and excessive force is dangerous. If black people are associated with criminal activity, there's increased murders, increased brutality in our communities and then these occurrences go uninvestigated and many times the police officers are not prosecuted. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, especially after what had happened. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Please be aware that racial profiling and police brutality is in existence and please do not justify or cover it up by associating black people, people of color, with a criminal element because it's not always true. I've been falsely accused and I think that association is very dangerous.
Thank you very much for being here. Felicia Ford.
Hi. Good morning to everyone. I'm here to address again the seriousness of the mass destruction at our cemeteries in the city of Los Angeles, Woodlawn Cemetery, Angeles Abbey, Paradise Cemetery. Thousands of blacks could only be buried at these cemeteries and have been thrown in the trash can and buried in a makeshift barrel. Government officials have, in this Los Angeles county and at the state Capitol, have intentionally ignored this unimaginable crisis and have left a wide range of family members in disple and emotionally distraught. Our loved ones' dead remains have been sold for millions of dollars in court settlements and even family members receiving as much as $23 and most of them have not received any compensation at all. The graveyards have been left for greed for the dens of thieves. I don't separate color here at all. I've not been taught that. My mama that's laying in that cemetery, which is my grandmother, hasn't asked me and taught me to separate color, but they have separated color and desecrated our family members. These were mostly where blacks could be buried in the 50s and the 60s. We need some help here. I don't want to come back here and drop names and point fingers of who is responsible for this pain and suffering that has been inflicted on a wide range of family members. I know my time is running out. I see it was given two minutes. Unfortunately, you gave a young lady five minutes to speak on farm issues in this city. This is a very serious matter and most of my taxes go to this, to Los Angeles and I don't live in Los Angeles. I live in the county of Los Angeles. And I just say to you, I know some of what I may be saying or is falling on deaf ears, but I want you to know, I'm not standing here alone. I am the president of this corporation. I come to speak for a wide range of people and if you could just give me this moment as I end, they will be speaking loud. I just have to come here, make occasions, to give you the story so that you'll understand what is the issue here pertaining to desecrating our family members. Thank you so much for giving me the time to speak and I don't want there to be any misunderstanding. When I do go over my time, I do appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And just so you know, on the South Central Farmer Market, there were ten cards. She spoke on behalf of all those others, so she had additional time on that. So, thank you very much.
Could I understand you bring fifteen people in order for me to talk more?
No, all I'm just indicating is that there were other individuals who chose to speak, so they yielded their time to her. But thank you very much for being here again. I appreciate it. Mr. Labanche.
Can we ask that member of the CLA staff or someone assist this person? The state of California does have a board that deals and governs cemeteries and I know, Mr. President, you spoke about having layers on. So if someone from the CLA's office could give the information so we make sure you're in the right agency that we could look at it. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Mr. Reyes.
Just want to get an understanding of the location of this situation, ma'am. Excuse me, ma'am. The location of where this is occurring?
The cemeteries, unfortunately, they are in Compton. That's why they're so oppressed. Woodlawn and Angeles Abbey and Lincoln are in the city of Compton. Paradise is in the city of Santa Fe Springs. And I'm not here to attack anyone here. It is not your responsibility what is happening.
Do you want to make sure that I understand that we're being responsive?
So those are outside the city. Thank you very much. We appreciate that clarification, Mr. Reyes. Okay, that closes public comment for today. Mr. Clerk, next order of business.
Mr. President, before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request to refer item three back to the Housing Committee.
Okay, if there's no objection to that referral, that'll be unanimous vote, so ordered.
On the regular agenda, items one through five, with the exception of three, are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Colleagues, any specials, one through five? Any specials? Ms. Hahn, special one through five?
I'd like to call five special.
Okay, let's hold five. Any others, colleagues? Not, please prepare the roll and the balance of the item and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Next one. For fourth with. Next batch of items.
Items six through twenty-five are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration and there is an amending motion. It has been circulated on item twenty-four and there are also cards on twenty-four as well as item seventeen.
Okay, let's call seventeen and twenty-four special for public comment. On the rest, let's open and close the public comment. Any specials, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Parks?
Special number twenty and we'd ask number nineteen to be sent to Budget and Finance. The date isn't until April and it's a special event issue.
Okay. Colleagues, if there's no objection to referring number nineteen back to public, sorry, to Budget and Finance, that'll be unanimous vote, so ordered. We have twenty special. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, let's prepare the roll and the balance of the items and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay. If there's no move to do otherwise, let's carry twenty-six over until Tuesday.
Item twenty-five, fourth with, please.
And twenty-five, we'll send fourth with as well. Item twenty-seven, please.
On the continuation page, item 27 is an item which public hearing has not been held. This is the appointment of Ms. Natalie Cole to the Board of Information Technology Commissioners.
Okay, let's, why don't we have Ms. Cole come forward right now? And we will take this item. Welcome to council. We're very pleased you have put yourself forward for public service. And with that, I'd like to recognize Ms. Hahn, our chair, to say a few words.
Thank you. And it's nice to see you, Ms. Cole.
Thank you.
We missed you in our committee, but we know that you're very qualified for this. And I've spent a lot of time with the other commissioners just talking about what's important as we go through these cable franchise renewals in terms of customer service. I hear it all the time.
Sure.
That the bottom line for our customers in Los Angeles is they get good customer service. You might speak to that. But I also thought I would say, as the CEO of Our Weekly, which, you know, I think is a great publication and it really fills a gap with reaching out, particularly to the African-American community, wondered if you could speak to how you think that experience and that position can help you as we move to doing a better job of reaching out, a better job of getting input back from our communities in terms of what services they need and, more importantly, what we think we can provide to them to get them connected. So if you want to answer both of those.
Sure. First of all, thank you and good morning. It's both an honor and a privilege to be here, and I'd like to thank the council for its time. I see I lost most of my confirmation hearing audience, but it is a pleasure to be here this morning.
Don't worry, we've got 50,000 viewers right now.
Okay. Well, I'd like to, first of all, also acknowledge and commend the council for its adoption of the consumer standards in the Bill of Rights as it relates to our citizens. And I think we, the citizens are being well-served with the adoption of these standards in Bill of Rights. Regarding my being CEO and publisher of Our Weekly, which is a newspaper that's targeted to the African-American community here in Los Angeles, it has in fact prepared me for this opportunity. But not only that, my history is that I've been in the newspaper industry for about 25 years, having worked for the Los Angeles Times for many years, as well as the LA Weekly. So in terms of being able to bridge the voice of the citizens to the council as it relates to needs assessments, I think being a part of the commission is going to allow me to do that, and I'm looking forward to that opportunity.
Good. Well, thank you. I wholeheartedly support your nomination. I think you'd be a great commissioner, and I think this is a very important time in Los Angeles.
Yes, it is. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Wesson.
I too, Mr. President, want to rise to congratulate you in advance. Really excited about the good work that you're going to be doing on the commission. And where it relates to the Our Weekly, I think that it's a straightforward, balanced publication. I read it on a regular basis, and I hope that you continue the good work. You've even said a nice thing or two about me, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, anybody else wishing to be heard? If not, please prepare the roll on Ms. Cole's nomination and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations and welcome aboard, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Very excited to serve with you.
Thank you.
All right, next item.
That would take you back to the items called special. Item five was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Do we also have a special meeting?
Yes, Mr. President, one item.
Why don't we recess the regular meeting, and if you please call the roll on the special?
Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zein, Garcetti, 12 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. First order of business?
There is one item on the agenda. It's an item which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Let's open public comment and close public comment on that. Anybody wishing to call the special? Seeing none, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Let's go forthwith on that, please. And if we can adjourn that meeting and return to the regular meeting.
And now that would take you back to item five, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Okay. Item number five, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, what we have before you here today, I think, is a creative, historic, positive, intelligent proposal. Long time coming in the harbor area. And now we have two major planning, land use planning issues. One is our incredible waterfront in San Pedro dubbed Bridge to Breakwater, which is a nine-mile land use project to revitalize the waterfront in San Pedro and to connect it really with the rest of Los Angeles. We also have a renaissance happening in downtown San Pedro. Developers have finally noticed San Pedro. They're very interested in San Pedro. They're looking at it as the last great waterfront property, really anywhere in Los Angeles. The community has long wanted to have a seamless transition, a seamless planning process between downtown San Pedro and this incredible waterfront. No one is interested in a waterfront development that sucks the life out of a emerging downtown San Pedro. This agreement is between the Port of Los Angeles, the Community Redevelopment Agency, and our planning department. This is historic. It's amazing. It seems really simple and smart, and it's what we should be doing to get those three agencies to agree to work together. The port is actually loaning the CRA some dollars to plant, to hire a planning person to specifically work on recognizing, getting RFPs, working on zoning issues of property in downtown San Pedro so that we can get ahead of the curve, so that when a developer comes in and wants to develop something on a piece of property in downtown San Pedro, we already have the community advisory committee working on what's important to us, design, height, what we see as being important for San Pedro while linking to the waterfront development. We want this to be a seamless planning process. It's taken a long time. I think this is a perfect agreement between these two, three agencies in the city of Los Angeles, and I ask you to support it. I think ultimately it will be a model for how we do things. And the rest of the city, I think the rest of the country will be looking at this kind of a triple agreement between three agencies that in the past have not worked together, have not worked on a seamless planning process. And I think this will be for the benefit of residents in San Pedro. While we cling to our charm of our past, while we cling to our history, we want to move into this future, which is opening up for us in terms of redevelopment and really a complete renaissance. So I hope you support this. It's a creative way to get what we all want in downtown San Pedro and the waterfront. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Our next speaker is Mr. Reyes.
I just want to rise and congratulate Ms. Hahn for such a great effort in establishing that string that pulls all the pieces together. I also know that there are great challenges in Wilmington, economic development, creation of jobs. So how we strengthen that linkage for those working communities and these new opportunities is an incredible task, but also an incredible opportunity. So I congratulate you. Anything I can do as chair of planning, land use and management, working with the planning department, we'll be there to support you. So congratulations, and it's great to see another level of evolution occur in the San Pedro area. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. I think we're all very excited for you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Zein is our last speaker.
Janice, I know you've done a tremendous amount of work down that area. The County of Los Angeles is in a plan to revamp Marina Del Rey. And we know that that's been a huge profit to the county since they own all the parcels and the condos and the businesses in Marina Del Rey. If we don't do something with that area, we're just going to keep going down the ladder. That is a wonderful area such as San Diego. We know we have the former plan director from San Diego, Ms. Goldberg, here in Los Angeles to help planning. It's been ignored and neglected for so many years. So I commend you for this project, all the other projects you have going down there, the little red car, that, the red train, whatever it's called, the choo-choo train that goes up and down there. And I'm sure that people enjoy that. We need to bring that back, the vitality, so people from all parts of the city will venture down. There'll be a destination point. We want to make downtown a destination point. When it's hot and it's 100 degrees in the San Fernando Valley, people need a destination point, and San Pedro's a wonderful place. So I support you, will vote for you, and the people of San Pedro should be very lucky that you've been pushing this agenda. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. All right. If we can please prepare the roll on the item and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved. Congratulations, Ms. Hahn. Next order of business, please.
Item 17 was called special for cards from the public.
Okay. Linda Jo Wright on item number 17, if you come forward, please.
I just wanted to congratulate everyone for such a great job that you guys do as our public servants. And I wanted to give you some classifies. That's LA Weekly's, that's what they call their classifieds, classifiles.
Okay.
This is last week's, January 20th through 26th, something about slim gems, windowjacks, and all kind of other stuff.
Thank you very much. That closes public comment for that item. Anybody wishing to be heard? If not, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item 20 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks? We have, next item before us, Mr. Parks, is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On item 20, we're asking for public assistance. On Sunday, January 15th, 2006, approximately 10:00 PM, Mr. Pablo Vidal Montez was found shot to death in the vicinity of 2803 Southwest Drive in South Los Angeles. He's a taxicab driver, and he was found inside of his cab. He had picked a customer up in the area of 138th Street and Hawthorne Boulevard in the city of Hawthorne. We're asking the public's help. We have a $50,000 reward, and we'd ask that anyone that would have information regarding this would call Detective Guzman at 213-485-1383 regarding these circumstances. Certainly, it's a tragic event. Young man was actually doing his work and employment and now is deceased. And so in behalf of the family and also the city of LA, we're moving forward on this $50,000 reward and ask the public's help in assisting 77th detectives in solving this crime.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. If nobody else wishes to be heard on this reward motion, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. And forthwith on that, Mr. Parks?
Thank you.
Yes, okay, let's go forthwith on that as well. We can also direct 25 to go forthwith, please. Okay, and our next item, item number 24, I believe.
Item 24, and there were cards from the public, and there was an amending motion. It has been circulated.
Okay, colleagues, these are, this is the meeting time for our committees, our council committees on item 24. And I know there was a last-minute exchange of meeting times, but we have one public speaker card. Mr. McQuiston, would you like to come forward?
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. Meeting times for committees is always a puzzle because you have to make sure they don't overlap. Unfortunately for the public, there is a problem trying to go to three committees who meet at the same time, and that occurs on Tuesday morning. One of those committees is going to run very long, and there's going to be a conflict with the city council. Besides, I hope that the committee members will take note of that and try to reschedule the times, maybe into the afternoons, and make them so they don't overlap quite as much. We're trying to encourage people, stakeholders, to come to these meetings and voice their opinions. Everything is done in committee, and we want to make sure that people feel like they can come to the committees and be heard. Unfortunately, not everybody can come down, so they send a representative. And the representative has to go to three places at the same time, and it doesn't work. So please, try to keep the overlap down, especially on the ones like the commerce and the housing and the education and neighborhoods committees and the public safety. Public safety right now is not a conflict.
Thank you very much, Mr. McQuiston. And for members of the public who are watching this or in the audience, the new council committee meeting schedule is available after passage of this on the lacity.org website, on the council webpage. So we invite folks who have been coming to our council committees at set times to please be advised those times will change, and we welcome you to come to City Hall for those open meetings for your participation. If nobody else wishes to be heard on this, Madam Clerk, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And that is approved. Let's go forthwith on that as well. Next item?
Council has motions for posting or referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused to arrive at 11:00 on Wednesday, February 22nd for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Reyes is excused.
Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused to leave at 11:00 AM on Friday, February 10th for city business. A motion is required.
Okay, Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Parks seconds. That excuse is granted.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused on February 21st and 22nd for city business. That meets council policy.
He is excused.
Councilmember Weezer requests to be excused to leave at 11:30 on Friday, February 3rd for city business. A motion is required.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas moves, and Ms. Gruel seconds. He is excused.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused to leave at 10:30 on Tuesday, January 31st for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay, she is excused.
And Councilmember Parks requests to be excused on Tuesday, January 31st for city business. That also meets council policy.
That excuse is granted.
That does clear the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. And just a reminder, colleagues, the number of committees that we have meeting just before council, as much as we can be aware of our council starting time at 10 o'clock, and just want to thank everybody for their great efforts in keeping the council meetings going on time. It's been a great couple weeks. Announcements, colleagues? Mr. Labange?
A quick one there on the special item on the special calendar. Would you go forthwith on that, please?
We'll go forthwith on that one.
And since it came out of Arts and Recreation Parks Committee, I just wanted to salute that it's the 250th birthday of Mozart today, and so one closer person in the chamber. And also, on a, or Saturday note, it's also tomorrow will be the 20th anniversary of the Challenger disaster. And I remember exactly where I was on Melrose and Vermont, the blind children's center in your district, Eric, when that horrible incident took place. And God bless all the families that involved with that, that lost lives.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Labange. Other announcements, colleagues? Seeing no other announcements, if I could ask everybody in chambers to please rise for adjourning motions. Can I please ask you to rise in council chambers for adjourning motions? Thank you. I know Mr. Labange and I yesterday marked the one-year anniversary as well of the MetroLink disaster, which we lost a member of our city family from the fire department, as well as had a number of injuries, including people we go to work with every single day here, like Steve, here in council chambers. And for the 11 folks who perished in that, we remember them one year later and also remind ourselves, though the Los Angeles Times article that I'm sure many of you read talked about how after the first year, many of, much of the support that rallies around families begins to dissipate, that those folks are in our hearts and our minds, and we will continue in year two and three and onward to keep them in our hearts, our prayers, and in our actions. Mr. Labange?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Garcetti and your office and others for organizing it. And our very own Steve Toby, who's our sound man, was on that train. Members of the city staff were there. I know the husband of our building and safety administrator, Anne Ornston, her husband was the conductor on one of the trains there. And Julie Bennett from the fire service was there. County sheriff was there. These are who had passed, a city employee of Glendale and one of Pasadena. It was a county-city train, and it was a wonderful event that you coordinated for all of us there in the fire departments. I certainly appreciate that. And also, members, as you say in a very nice way, and I know Wendy mentioned too, the joy of seeing Bob Jetavisi again, who was there, full face, fighting in his family, recovering in the circle. We don't know what cards were dealt, and all those people were dealt very difficult cards that day, on that morning, but as they regrouped their life, the joy of seeing Bob Jetavisi, who was such an outstanding member of the planning department, and this city family there yesterday in celebration and in solidarity with those who lived through the tragedy. Thank you, Mr. President, very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Appreciate it. Adjourning motions, colleagues? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Fayard Nicholas, one of the members of the show-stopping Nicholas Brothers dance duo that thrilled audiences in 30th in the 1930s. Also, they were reportedly the people that also assisted Sammy Davis Jr. in his early career. They were self-taught. Both Fayard and Harold tap-danced their way from vaudeville to the Harlem and the legendary Cotton Club to Broadway and then Hollywood. Fayard passed away at the age of 91 on Tuesday, January 24th. Mr. Wesson's probably aware that Nicholas Brothers grandchildren now are carrying on that legacy in both the 8th and the 10th District in their family dance studio and dance activities, but just wanted to bring that to, he's a legend in the show business arena and certainly opened up many doors in the 30 for black entertainers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Other adjourning motions? Mr. Zine?
President, we request we adjourn in memory of a Los Angeles police officer, Robert Earl Young, passed away January 23rd. Officer Young was born January 25th, 1958 in Los Angeles, joined the Los Angeles Police Department December 17th, 1984, was assigned to Central Division, married to Shirley in San Bernardino County Sheriff Deputy, and Officer Young was one of the substitute sergeant arms that protected us here in council chambers. He was a familiar face here in council chambers. His father's retired police officer. His brother Calvin is an LAPD officer. His brother Melvin is a deputy sheriff. He'll be greatly missed by his family, friends, coworkers with the police department, survived by his wife, sons, Robert and Christopher, daughter Jocelyn, brothers Melvin and Calvin, and father James Earl Young. May retired, may active police officer Robert Earl Young rest in peace.
Thank you. All members? All members? Any other adjourning motions? Seeing none, one announcement I forgot to share, colleagues, is one of our own, Mr. Parks, was inducted into the International Civil Rights Hall of Fame in Atlanta, Georgia earlier this week, and we want to give him our congratulations. Joins some of the civil rights greats of our time, and congratulations in that great honor. He make us proud. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. Have a great weekend, everybody.